Okay, it is seven o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order. And would you please take the roll, Jenny?
Mr. Bohan?
Here.
Mr. Conrady?
Here.
Ms. Gores?
Present.
Chief Speaker?
Yes.
Present.
Uh, Mrs. Steiner?
Here.
Mr. Yekitis?
Here.
Mr. Neavie?
Here.
Let the records show that Dr. Schuman is absent.
Okay, then I would ask Kim Kohlstad, our new administrator, to lead us in the plenary allegiance.
Allegiance to the White of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first thing on the agenda then is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on July thirteenth of 2022. What is the board's desire regarding those minutes?
Move through, please.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And any questions, comments about them? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gores?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neavie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Abstain. And approval of the accounts for the month of July, what would be your desire?
Move through, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about those? Then we'll take the roll.
Ms. Gores?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neavie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Do we have any district commissions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then moving on to communications from the public. The board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the meeting for the board to enter into a debate or discussion of an issue. Comments in regard to personnel matters are not allowed. Information presented cannot result in immediate action due to the open meetings law but could precipitate a future agenda item. Comments will be limited to three minutes. And I have one. Do we have any others?
I didn't see any.
Okay. Then Mike O'Reilly, would you like to come up and address the board? And Jenny will let you know when you're at the two and a half minute mark if you're still talking, so you have thirty seconds. And he'll hand you a mic.
Like.
Mike has the mic to give to Mike.
Okay, I just would like to make a few comments about the incident that happened at the high school in January concerning the attack of the liaison officer. First, I would like to say that I have read these police reports and I have listened to the radio chatter, and it is quite clear to me that out of the multiple children involved, some if not all were currently registered students that were attending daily classes at the high school. Some or all should not have been there, and that indicates a breach of security to me. This is what is being communicated throughout the community, and the board's silence on this matter has been deafening. I realize you will not interact with me tonight, but I am telling you that you need to make a public statement concerning this issue, and it can't be a whitewash comment. Transparency is going to be key to moving forward, and you can provide this information without any identifying info about the children. Please don't let our community down. Thank you.
Then we will move on to any correspondence. Is there a correspondence file? Okay, then announcements?
No, no announcements.
Okay. And the superintendent's?
Superintendent's report. I do have a few items to begin with. I wanted to be sure to make note of that Marshfield High School was a recipient of the WIAA Award of Excellence again this year. The WIAA's Award of Excellence promotes and recognizes the efforts and achievements of schools in the area of sportsmanship, ethics, integrity, leadership, and character. This last year, just thirty-nine schools from around the state were selected by the WIAA for fulfillment of the required criteria in order to be named recipient of the Award of Excellence for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, so this is for our prior school year. So we wanted to take the opportunity to extend great thanks and congratulations to our student athletes, our coaches, our athletic department staff, and the school as a whole for this very honorable accomplishment. This awards program has been around just six years now, is my understanding, and this is the third consecutive year that Marshfield High School has earned this. So I wanted to be sure to acknowledge them and bring recognition to their efforts. I think that's just outstanding effort to have won that three years in a row now. The other item that I have is school, the startup for the twenty-two, twenty-three school years right around the corner. It's hard to believe that that's the case. It's always an exciting time of year as we're getting ready to welcome back our students. You know, accordingly, we've got a lot of activities coming up in the few coming up weeks that I wanted to be sure to identify things like our open houses. So for our elementary schools, all of our Marshfield Public Elementary School open houses will be held here in the district on Thursday, August twenty-fifth, from four-thirty to six P.M. These are open house in-person events. These are opportunities for parents to come and see the schools, meet their teachers, and be able to see where their kids are going to be having classes for the upcoming year. The one variation from that, as I understand it, I believe, I don't know if Sharr Ulrich is here, but Nasonville has one small variation for kindergarten. Is that correct?
Correct.
The one variation for that on elementary is that the Nasonville specifically, just kindergarten, the first through sixth is the same date and time that I gave, but for kindergarten at Nasonville, the open house is held on Tuesday, the twenty-third of August, from four-thirty to six P.M. At the middle school level, a middle school pickup for schedules for seventh grade students is held August fifteenth from seven-thirty A.M. till six P.M. August sixteenth from seven A.M. to two P.M. And for eighth graders at the middle school, scheduled pickup is on August seventeenth. That runs on August seventeenth from seven A.M. to two P.M. For the seventh graders and eighth graders who are unable to pick up or attend the designated date and time. And the middle school meet and greet, there's also a meet and greet, which is a different date and time that is held on August twenty-ninth from five-thirty P.M. to seven-thirty P.M. Again, these are in-person opportunities for students at the middle school level. High school, fall registration at the high school is held same times for each of these dates that I'm going to give. It's, and those times are seven-thirty A.M. to three-thirty P.M. For seniors, it's August fifteenth. Juniors, the sixteenth, and let me just add the disclaimer, I believe, Mr. Hind, younger siblings with those students we just identified can come at the same time. So Seniors Day is August fifteenth, but if they have a younger sibling, the younger sibling can come with the senior brother or sister, correct? Okay. And that continues on. So the sixteenth of August, juniors and their younger siblings, if they have any. Sophomores are set up for August seventeenth, and then August eighteenth is designated for freshmen and anyone else who has not yet registered for the high school. The freshman orientation and the fall meet and greet for all of our students at the high school, grades nine through twelve, nine, twelve will take place at the high school on Wednesday, October twenty-fourth, excuse me, August twenty-fourth, from four P.M. to eight P.M. And all of the, that was a lot to go through. All of the information that I just reviewed is available on our school district website if parents want to get on or students want to get on and double-check the dates and times for those various different levels. Again, that's www.marchfieldschools.org.
And when they go on the website, do they click middle school, high school, or the elementary, or is it just going to be on the feed?
It would be a specific building in school.
Okay.
Yeah, so go on. I think what I'm hearing, just to repeat what Jenny was saying, is for parents that are listening, go on the website and click on your child's school, your specific school, and you'll find that information.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to gifts because we have generous gifts from the community, and they include fifteen hundred dollars to the music department from Paul Schlockenhoff in memory of Todd Newman, two-inch PVC conduit, light fixture and installation costs valued at six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents from Merritt Electric Service, various donations from Marshfield Tiger Booster Club totaling seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-two cents. And then we have three donations to the high school football program, two hundred and fifty dollars from Gorski and Whitman, and three hundred dollars from Hewitt's Meat, two hundred and fifty dollars from Power Pack. And then we have four donations to the high school basketball program, two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents from the Tiger Hoops Club, two hundred dollars from Rose Bowl Lanes, one thousand from Mike Ott, and five hundred from Gene Hill Construction. What is your desire regarding these gifts?
I guess I usually, the one that says, "Accept with great thanks," so I'll say it again.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. And we will go ahead and take the vote on that.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neavie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gores?
Yes.
And we will move on to Employee Relations Committee. First, the meeting update from August first. Mr. Yekitis?
Okay. Full business, we talked about the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three academic calendar. Recommendation is to revise that calendar to add March tenth as a non-student contact staff development day. Committee consented to move the recommendation forward for board approval. We'll have that as an action item in a moment. New business, twenty-three, twenty-four academic calendar, preliminary calendar was reported out to the committee. The proposed calendar will be brought back to the committee next month for additional review and potential action. We're also, we also took a look at the current staffing plan, and I talked to Nicole Labor, our HR person earlier, and she said, "Well, we're down to about five teaching staff members that we still have to hire," which is an outstanding number. If you saw, I think it was the Journal Sentinel today, I don't know if it was Milwaukee or Madison, they're still looking for a hundred, one hundred and forty-one teachers. So we're in good shape there. I don't want to say great shape because even though there's only five people, some of those positions are some of the hard ones to find, and there's lots of competition, and maybe a little harder to find those people, but things are looking good overall on the staffing update. Thirty-two new professional staff have been hired, while three positions remain unfulfilled, but we've updated that, talked to you today, that's five positions. Eight support staff, three administrator positions have also been filled for this upcoming school year. The hiring process will continue to fill remaining support staff positions. We also looked at a five-year staffing review, and that was provided just to summarize positions added or eliminated from twenty nineteen through twenty-twenty-two. Okay, if I can get back to the original board meeting. Okay. As the committee chair, I'm going to ask for the approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three academic calendar revision with that March tenth, I think March tenth date on that. So make that motion on behalf of the committee.
Okay, so we have a motion on behalf of committee to revise the academic calendar for this coming school year. Any comments or questions regarding that? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neavie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gores?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
The only other thing we have on the employee relations agenda for today is what I mentioned before, the taking, we are taking a look at the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four academic calendar, and that is, will be available and is available for the board for, this is a first reading tonight, so there's no action right now. We had talked about possible action, but we had decided that we would look at the calendar a little further and make sure we talk to staff and the public and whatever else on that. So right now, that's just the first reading, no action, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. And Finance Committee, and I believe Mr. Conrady.
Tonight, we discussed the format of the current bills that are given to the school board each month. So what that is, is each month we get a list of all the checks that went out, so we're getting ready to go out, and then we approve those to go. And the way we get them, it's all in order of check now. So they're working on making it so we can understand exactly where that check goes without having to try to read into it and see, okay, yep, this is who got paid, that had come out of this department, okay, I understand. So they're going to try to make it a little easier for us to understand and the public also. So the next month, we'll be see exactly what we had yet. It's probably going to take a few months to get something put together and approved, but they will get something to us so we got a little better understanding of what we're approving. So debt defiance, the Finance Committee is looking at using debt defiance as a way to pay off debt that is scheduled to be paid off in future years. It would be done in a manner that would keep the tax rate equal to or less than what it is, what it was last year. It would allow for debt to be paid off early and will result in a small savings and interest cost. So as you all know, running to pay debt off is a good thing. So it gives us look better with our bond rating for the future, and if we ever have to borrow more money, everything just looks that much better for us. And not being, not having to carry debt is a good thing for everybody. Update on twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three budget, July first, state aid estimate came in at twenty-seven million, roughly two million more than last year. This increase doesn't mean additional money, but a reduction to the local tax levy amount. So we get the money, but then the levy drops to the taxpayers. Well, that's a good thing, too. Either way, we're paying for it, whether it comes through the government or one way or another, it went through the taxes. WRS contribution rates increased from six and a half percent in twenty-twenty-two to six point eight percent in twenty-twenty-three. This will add approximately thirty-seven thousand in additional cost to the district. Preparing for single budget adjustments and annual public hearings, which will be held in late September, early October. So that's when we'll go over the whole budget with the public. Budget adjustments for twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, this goes with, the adjustments are for the sale of the old Apple iPads and the purchase of new ones. Mike Drevolo has worked very hard with Apple, setting the purchase up and making the trade in, so we actually come out pretty good. So I thank you for that. The board previously approved a budget adjustment related to payoff of the Apple lease. This is for the hardware. Total amount of the iPads came to one million, four hundred thousand, requires board action. So with that, I move to approve the budget adjustment for twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
So we need a second?
No.
From committee.
Okay, from committee. So on behalf of committee?
Yep.
We have a proposal for a budget adjustment for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
Yep.
Okay. And are there any questions or comments regarding that?
I just, I just, you need a little better explanation for me to understand. This will help everyone understand why I am not on the Finance Committee, but how, the debt defiance?
Defeasance.
Defeasance process. So, so we, it seems like we're finding money to put towards debt earlier. How? Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, it's basically done through the process of looking at the tax rate where it's basically projecting to be, and keeping it at the current level, which previous year amount, and then working backwards from that process. So right now, without doing that, what would happen is the tax rate might be dropped quite a bit. Debt defecence is something that's going on throughout many school districts across Fayetteville, Wisconsin, primarily because it's a good time for it. There's been increased state aid for many school districts, and more importantly, there's been obviously an increase in property values, all of which has a positive effect on the tax rate itself. So what happens is, that's right, without doing debt defecence type things, would likely drop considerably. And so what we're trying to do is keep it where it is by adding additional debt that has to be paid by the taxpayers anyway.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah, so the proper term for that is debt defecence, F-E-A-S-A-N-C-E, defecence for that.
So debt defecence is going to give us an opportunity to get more debt taken care without changing the tax rate.
Correct.
That's the bottom line.
That's how I can phrase that.
To pay that debt off early.
Yeah, pay it off early because we have the advantage of a little bit of extra because of inflation and other things, so that gives us an opportunity.
And I think it's
We wouldn't be looking at this if we weren't in an environment now where we feel the tax rate would either be the same or go up. So it's an opportunity for us now to try and take care of savings, obviously for interest cause, favorable bond rating that proves, obviously, we look at just the fact we don't have this future debt, so that in the event that we want to try to incur additional debt at some point down the road, it would make that process a little bit easier if we had more flexibility.
Right, okay.
I think a few other details that are probably good to make note of is the debt that we're talking about, especially for people from the public that are watching or will review this meeting later, is we're talking specifically about the debt that the school district incurred when the building construction was done back in two thousand and six. Washington Elementary, Madison Elementary, the additions to Lincoln, those building projects that happened back at that time, is that correct, Pat?
Correct.
We had a twenty-year note on the loan that the district took out at that time that is on schedule to come to an end in two thousand and twenty-six. So we're looking to take advantage of a very favorable financial situation right now for next year with where our state aid is projecting to come in to pay that twenty-year note off two years early. That's basically it in a nutshell.
Okay.
Yep.
And once again, that state aid coming in has nothing to do with money that is put into budgets for teachers or for books or for any of the operational expenses. This is just something that applies primarily to the overall tax levy.
Yeah, this, this has nothing to do, has no impact on our revenue limits, so this has no immediate additional dollars for operational purposes for next school year, the next couple of years. This is just about paying debt off early.
So a person from the public saying, "Wow, you're getting another two million dollars." That should take care of some of these other types of issues that maybe have been part of referendums or whatever else in the past. No, that's a totally different item in the complicated financial situation and reporting out in categories that all school districts have to deal with.
Any other questions or comments regarding the motion? Okay, then we will take the vote on the motion on the floor.
Mr. Neavie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gores?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes. I believe that's all I have, Francis.
Thank you. And our other three committees, Facilities, Safety and Transportation, Curriculum and Instruction and Policy Legislation did not meet, as is often the case in the summer when things are a little slower. So we will move on to new business, and we do have a retirement and
If I could just note for the board that in board docs under item A for new business, there's an attachment that shows the personnel report. That personnel report is broken out into three different areas, which line up with items A, B, and C under, under new business. So there were some change of plans for the first couple of groupings there, so we do have one, one late retirement request from a teacher's aide. So that would, from the personnel report, that first line across the top is associated with item A.
And that's the new one that has to be listed. Okay. All right, I'll take care of that. As an individual board member, I make a motion that we approve the retirement of Sandra Manson, a teacher assistant of special education at the middle school. That will need a second.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the retirement of Sandra Manson. Any questions or comments? Then we'll take the vote.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gores?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neavie?
Yes.
We'll move right on to resignations, which is the next category. As an individual board member, I move that we approve the resignations of Rebecca Banaman, health assistant at Madison, Colleen Jacob, a teacher assistant of regular education at Madison, Cassandra Morzevsky, an administrative assistant, accounting manager at Central Office, and Amanda Engel, teacher assistant, special education, Madison. Again, I make that move as an individual board member, and that will need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gores?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neavie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
And we have employment of new personnel, a number of people, and that's not unusual for August. As an individual board member, I move that we approve the employment of the following: Dawn Armbruster, administrative assistant to the director of student services at the central office, replacing Scott Sager; Daniel Banzer, information technology support technician for the district, replacing Blake Jolma; next is Carrie Bellanti, a teacher, family and consumer science, middle school, replacing Samantha Will; next one is Jody Budke, administrative assistant to the accounting manager, central office, replacing Cassandra Morzevsky, or Morzusky; Colin Cowell, teacher assistant of special education at the middle school, replacing Jerry Legrand; Ashley Hyman, teacher assistant, personalized pathway program at the middle school, replacing Peggy Mockton; Samantha Will, school counselor at the high school, replacing Crystal Salzman; and Scotty Whitkus, another counselor at the middle school, replacing Kim Kohlstad, who has become an assistant principal now at the high school. I make that motion as an individual board member. We will need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Ms. Gores?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neavie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Okay. Then the next item under new business is approval of the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three mental health consortium memorandum of understanding, and that is to provide, allowing a provider of mental health services to have space for the students to have video sessions with their therapist from the school so that they don't have to spend time being transported, missing more school before or after the appointment. But it still keeps everything separate as far as the provider's responsibilities and their billing and their records and their HIPAA requirements versus our responsibilities just to provide the space for that. Do we have a motion?
Move through, please. Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
We had, we had a few that we approved last month with our, their prior providers. This one is specifically for Marshall Clinic Health System. This is one we've been working on for a little while. They'll be new to serving in this, in this capacity as a provider within our mental health consortium.
So serving in-house in our schools, okay.
And none of these are exclusive arrangements, so that is why this is something that's open to multiple providers of services for to multiple providers of services for the kids to cut down on absences and time away from school.
And I just want to clarify, this particular provider is limited to only telehealth. This, this agreement is just to do the telehealth option.
And, and we, correct.
But others are going to be doing in-person in the school. Is that correct?
There is some of that, too, yes, with other providers.
Yeah.
And but we don't, the families have to provide the equipment for the telehealth. So we don't do that.
Okay, okay. So this would be on personal laptop.
Provider and the family.
Or a personal tablet that the child brings in for that purpose only. Because is that right? Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we'll go ahead and take the ball on now.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Euquidus?
Yes.
Mr. Neav?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Of State.
Okay. Then we'll move on to old business. This is the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. And per the U.S. Department of Education, we review this every six months. So this is our six-month review. And I will turn it over to administration.
Yeah, just a little bit more background. So with the, the different rounds of federal funding, when we got to SRR3, the, the federal government did put this particular requirement for school districts to be in compliance with receipt of, of SRR3 relief funding. It's called the, the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan. A lot of districts, us including, did devise our own plans that we did report on as we started some of the, the two previous school years. But the federal government, working with the state departments, in our case here in Wisconsin with the DPI, had a very specific template that needed to be followed to be in compliance through the state to receive the, the federal, the federal money. So the, the template that, that you find in, this document is in board docs, it's available for public view. So board members should be able to pull that up on your board docs to take a look at it. You'll see that it is the template that we're prescribed to follow by the DPI breaks things down into different, different categories. What we did is largely, as a starting point with this report, and the first time that we brought it to the board was in December of, of this last school year, because it wasn't until into the middle of the school year before the federal, the SRR3 funding plan was finalized and approved. In about 90% of it, or the bulk of it, between the state and the federal government, it was around that time that we started to bring, need to bring these, these continuity of service learning plans forward for review at the, at the board level. So what we did, our administrative team in our district as a starting point, is took a lot of the elements of that report that we had this time of year a year ago and moved it into the, the template format you see in this particular report. As we've adjusted things, you'll notice that there are updates that happened last year that show up in different font colors because of changes that we made, most notably in February discontinuing the, the mask requirement. So you'll see that noted in the document in the print form. It's page four. Under mitigation measures, you'll see in, in red font, the, the reference to that update that happened in February. Shortly thereafter, in the blue, you'll see that we discontinued that on buses as well. So that constituted, we have to review this every six months. So that update at that time constituted a six-month review for the latter half of this last school year. So this time of year, August, we're up on our next six-month review. What our administrative team has done is gone through in these different categories and areas and made some updates. The, the current updates show in purple font. And to summarize, they really put us in a place very similar where we left off in the prior school year. The intent for plans for the startup, for school is to continue with masks being optional. We are going to continue our, what's referred to as your stay home when you're sick type of approach. But we are not going to be actively contact tracing. And all of that review is going to be left in the hands of the Public Health Department. We're going to continue with our cleaning protocols, including the use of the disinfecting equipment that we've purchased using federal funding the last couple of years to try to disinfect areas where we have had individuals that have been in that do end up testing positive. So that, those updates really, not a lot has changed from where we left off. And we've written it to be pretty open-ended to be able to adjust. And most noteworthy that, that I want to make reference to, even as we speak here within the last week, if, if you haven't heard, the CDC is talking about coming out with some new updated quarantine and isolation guidelines. In cases where we do have families come forward to us or staff members identifying that they've tested positive, we do intend to continue to adhere to the isolation and quarantine guidelines that the CDC has in place. But those are only in cases that we become known of, you know, through contact and declaring with us at, at, at school. We're not going to be involved in testing at schools. We're not going to be involved in, in contact tracing. Those procedures and details, we're staying with where we left off. Now, the Wood County superintendents do have a meeting next Monday with Wood County Health Department. I'm not anticipating any changes from them. But given the fact that we don't know what the new quarantine and isolation guideline changes are going to be from the CDC probably, and again, it could come out any day now. As soon as we're meeting here today, they may be out tomorrow. But our intent is to adjust to that. And that's why I'd also like to make reference to, the CDC has a very nice calculator tool on their website that is, is a pretty good way of being able to go in, a pop-up screen shows, and you can answer a few questions. I wish that was available like a year ago or a year and a half ago, because it does a very good job of providing, you know, exactly your, you've, you've tested positive, your symptoms started on this day, are your symptoms improving or not. You click through the tool and it advises what your return date would be. So that is, that's what our intentions are. I also have, and I'd like to hand this around to board members. I want to take one, Francis, and hand it that way. Because the way this report template is devised, it, it obviously spread things out and also showcases the older material, which we really need to have to be able to depict for our reporting purposes, the changes that have occurred over time. The document that I've got for the board is, it's a one-page summary that tries to pull all of these pertinent details together in one place. This is an example of a draft form that I'm working on to use in conjunction with a parent communication to get this paired down into a summary, a summary document. And you can see reference at the bottom of this is the website for that CDC calculator tool that I referred to.
So we are just suggesting to families that they need to use the CDC calculators sort of on our system that to figure out.
Well, this is, this would be, this would be the scenario if we have parents contact us and say, my daughter has tested positive, you know, we, what do we do or what, you know, when, when can she come back to school? That's, they've self-identified, we know that they've on their own, a family has chosen to go and get tested and they've, are a positive case. We would adhere to what the CDC guidelines are for a return. And right now, they're five days of isolation and then being able to return, starting on day six, if symptoms are improving, while wearing a mask for five days. So that would be an example of, of what we're planning to adhere to for known positive cases.
Okay.
In that scenario.
Because, because the calculator, the CDC calculator that you're mentioning seemed to offer the opportunity to, to put in specifics for an individual that may then change the length of time that they need to be in isolation or length of time they do.
Well, what I'm referring to is the CDC, there are reports coming out that the CDC is going to be adjusting in a favorable way, I guess I'll say. I think they're going to be reducing the criteria a little bit and reducing the number of days. And that is reported to be coming out any day now.
Okay.
So we are anticipating that they will adjust that calculator tool at that time, which is why we're writing these forms to say we're going to adhere to what the guidelines are. Because when they change and are a little bit more relaxed, we're planning to adjust to that new version.
So I guess I don't understand, if there is a calculator that gives sort of an individual sort of personalized recommendation, are we, but it sounds like we're also going to have, like, we're going to have a blanket standard of, of quarantining and masking afterwards. But if there's this personalized calculation to happen, then, then we might, why would we need to have a blanket statement about what's going to happen if we, if we're able to do this individually?
I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm, I'm following.
I think the, the point of the statement, I think, is what she's asking, what is the point if they can individually go on there and, and.
That's what we are going to adhere to.
But the point, I think, is the intent is to follow CDC.
A generalized framework that is established, sort of as a one-size-fits-all. Okay.
The statement, I think, is a statement of intent to follow. And, and as he said, they may be very different, very simply.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, I, I think if, maybe I try a little bit of a redo on, on, I guess the point that I'm making is that for known cases, the district is planning to adhere, as far as isolation, quarantine guidelines, we're following what the CDC has. And if you go to the web, the web pages that I'm referring to, the website that's on the bottom of the document that I handed out, the CDC does have in graph form, everything that I just referred to. If you want to interpret the graph and figure it out on your own, what your circumstances are. What's, I, I'm just pointing out that the tool is kind of nice because you can just, it's kind of a, a Q and A version.
Right, yeah.
And it, it, it takes you, rather than having to follow the flow chart that they've got in the detailed graph.
Okay. I guess what I'm wondering about, we say, okay, you've identified yourself as having COVID, you must stay out of school for five days. And then if your symptoms are improving, you may come back and wear a mask for five days. Then suppose the parent has gone on to the CDC calculator and said, but wait a minute, I put in all the specifics of my child's situation, and it looks like he only needs to be out of school for four days, according to the calculator. Are we going to let them come back on day five?
I, I don't think that that sort of confusion should be a problem because it's based upon specific dates.
Okay.
Okay, so a scenario would be saying, my daughter tested positive.
But they're not identifying it.
Last Friday, which is August 5, I believe, August 4.
Symptoms may have started.
That's, that's day zero. That's day zero when the symptoms started.
And that's going to be absolute, I got it, I got it. So it may be that they're finding out later, you know, say four days after symptoms, they test. But, you know, others may have, you know, found out two days after symptoms. So that's going to change. But, but the standard is, I got it. Okay, that's what the calculator is going to help with. But we don't need to worry about that. Okay.
I think the calculator helps because the charts that have been out there for a while are, are difficult to follow.
Yeah.
And, and track and figure out on your own.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments about the, any?
I noticed that there's a questionnaire that's attached for public comment on the use of SRR3 funds. It is not the intention of the board to use that to replace any required public meetings, is it?
She's at the bottom of, it's in.
It's the, it's the last line, yep.
But we have that link. But I think, I think I.
So there, I think we'd, just want to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding correctly. You know, Kathy, you're pointing out that there is a link at the bottom of this form in, in this, so.
Public comment.
The report that we're referring to, and the, the addition or version that was out there effective from February, the February updates, has been out on the district website the, the entire time. This current version with the updates is in board docs for, for board review and presentation this evening as part of our six-month update. After the board meeting here, we will update the document to the current version on the district website. So at any time, anybody from the public can follow that link that you're referring to, to submit feedback on, on the document and use of funding.
And it says that the, we're returning to five-day instruction in person?
Every day in person, yes.
My question is, are parents going to be allowed back in our schools?
I'm sorry, I could.
Are parents going to be allowed back in our schools this year?
In, in general, I would say yes, including starting with the open houses that I talked about before are, are open to parents to attend in person. As far as other specific scenarios or examples beyond that, that's something that they would contact their building principals to, to work out what those requests are.
But all the open houses are there for parents to come with their students. Any other questions? Then that is the last item on our agenda for tonight. So I would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Okay, and we'll take the ball.
Okay. Mr. Euquidus?
Yes.
Mr. Neav?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Let's go, folks.
Thank you.